All right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out tonight with the time change. The time is now 6:00 P. M. I'd like to call a meeting of La Jolla City Council to order. Today is November 3rd, 2025. If we'll all rise for our invitation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the chance to serve the people of La Jolla. Tonight, we ask for your wisdom, especially as many families in our community face uncertainty. With the government shutdown and SNAP benefits paused, some of our neighbors are struggling. Give this council clarity, unity, and compassion to act wisely and lead with care. Bless those who are working quietly to help others and remind us that leadership is a service. May our words tonight build trust and hope in a time when many need both. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. If you'll stay standing for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Schofield, roll call, please.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velazquez.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochoa.
Ventoya.
Here.
Rizzo.
I'm here.
All right. First things first, I have a proclamation that I will be reading. This proclamation is one of my favorite things to do, to read proclamations of him. This one is for hospice and the Hospice and Palative Care Month 2025. So, whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. is dedicated to providing compassionate, patient-centered care that supports the mind, body, and spirit while educating the community about end-of-life care. Whereas Hospice and Palative Care honor the dignity of every individual, ensuring comfort, respect, and support for patients and their families. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice, Inc. serves La Jolla and surrounding communities through a devoted team of professionals and volunteers who address physical, emotional, and spiritual needs. Whereas, this care is made possible through the community generosity, allowing services to be provided locally and without charge. Now therefore, I, Joseph Ayala, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Hospice and Palative Care Month in La Jolla, Colorado. And I encourage all citizens to learn more about hospice and the vital comfort and compassion and the hope it provides. Let me sign this, and I'll have hospice come up to get it. Just one second. Bear with me for a moment here, guys. Betty wants a shot, too. Okay, here we go. Three, two, one. Quit blinking, you guys. Thank you.
Can you look this way?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you could say something, but all three of you can talk, you can. Please.
There you go. So, on behalf of Arkansas Valley Hospice, I would like to thank Mayor Ayala and the members of the council for recognizing National Hospice and Palative Care Month. At Arkansas Valley Hospice, our team believes that hospice is not about giving up. It's about helping people live fully with comfort, dignity, and peace. This proclamation shines a light on the compassion and care that hospice brings to families right here in our community. We are so grateful for our volunteers, our healthcare partners, and for all of you who helped make this work possible. And we'd also like to invite everyone to our open house this Thursday, November 6th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at our office, 531 Lewis Avenue, to learn more about the care and support our hospice provides. Thank you again for helping us honor the heart and purpose of hospice care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say just a couple of things?
Yes.
So, last year, this time, when we did this proclamation, my dad had literally moved into hospice about exactly 24 hours before we read the proclamation. And I, it was hard. I was fighting back tears last year. And just what you guys do for our community, there's, there, I mean, we just did a bunch of words, but I, there's no words to fully encompass what you do. And it's something you don't know until you know. And I know. And I appreciate all of you. I appreciate your entire staff. Your volunteer web is impressive. And from the bottom of my heart, my whole family, I just thank you and I appreciate you. And also, they have durable medical equipment. It's a service that any of us could need anytime. Crutches or a wheelchair, like they have this like warehouse of stuff. And Charlie will bring it to you. And anyway, you guys are just awesome. And thank you. So, thank you, Marmee. See you Thursday.
See you.
Thank you. All right. Now, this is something special that we're gonna do. Michael, if you want to take over. Brad, are you coming up too, Brad?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, you got, you got a script for me?
I got names.
You got names? Okay. So, as many folks y'all know that were here tonight and watching at home, there was a, there was a fire right across the street here from City Hall that night amid all the chaos and whatnot that was going on. A group of students stepped up and in a real big way for, for the city, for the department. They're all, all are Otero College students. They're all sitting there in the back. And we wanted to take, take a moment to recognize them. So, if you all would all come up, I want you all to crowd right up here in front, so everybody can see you. Okay, you guys gotta go all the way up there, right in the middle, guys. So, for those who don't know, when the fire broke out and the department went to go grab a plug or go catch a hydrant, the hydrant that had just tested good, two months prior to, two weeks, or excuse me, two weeks prior to actually not working. So, in the midst of it, one of the large diameter hoses was being drugged to another hydrant to be hooked up to it. And these folks, right, the, all these suits right here jumped in and helped out, haul the hose over to the hydrant that we could get a, get a good plug or get a good fix on. So, I wanna say y'all's names. I do apologize if I mess them up. If you wanna just wave, wave your hand to the crowd and to everybody watching on Facebook. Appreciate that. Callie Fokes. Hire, Callie. Hire. Hire.
Hire.
She was like, mm, go back. See, is it Chloe Brill?
Yeah.
Hire.
Isabel Rosero?
Rosario.
Rosario, excuse me. Danica Schawner?
Schawner.
Schawner, okay. Close. Jenna Schramm? Reagan Mueborn?
Yeah.
Marissa West?
There's an easy one, huh?
There we go. Thank you, Marissa.
You can thank my parents for that one.
Yeah, thank your parents. There you go. Ava Flotting?
Close. It was flating.
Flating. Riley?
Riley.
Riley.
Lavelle.
Lavelle. Oh, boy, I would not have got that one at all, though. Ty Reed? Wyatt Kelly? Kayla? Keela?
Keita.
Oh, say it for us again?
Keita.
Keita what?
Fujino.
Oh, boy. Keita Fujino. There we go. I mean, we're, all y'all hanging out together with weird names at night together. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. And then we also have Cage Schreiner. Is that correct? All right. So, on behalf of the city of La Jolla, we want to officially say thank you for your actions that night. We have a fire department T-shirt for each of you. The chief will be giving out. And I have a...
That's not yours.
And I have city coins to pass out to each of you while Chief Davison toss a little bit more.
Sure. Well, I just, I can't say thank you guys enough. As you know, during an event like this or any type of emergency event, we have a thousand things going on, thousand things through our mind. And when I was told about the hydrant, which was a secondary hydrant down the street, when it wasn't working, I was trying to come up with a plan. I turned around and looked, and here you all came with the hose. And there was, I think there was others in there, too. But I wanna say personally from the fire department, thank you guys for stepping up. You took a load off of my mind and my crew's mind of moving that hose. I know it wasn't easy. That five-inch hose is, is a little heavy at times, especially when there's a little bit of water in there.
Good thing we're all athletes, right?
That's right. Yeah, I can, I think I got you signed off on the workout that day. But we truly appreciate it, you know, and whoever else helped. But it just shows the heart and the desire that you guys had and stepping up and helping the community and not even waking it on. You just did it. So, thank you guys very much on our behalf. And I'm very honored to have you guys up here tonight.
Thank you.
Do any of you want to say something?
I just wanna say that the city of La Jolla has been very awesome to us. We have kids from Japan, Wyoming, Colorado, all over. And I wouldn't wanna be anywhere else. You guys have been amazing to us as athletes. Walk in Walmart, you guys say hi to us. So, I think it was the least that we could have done for all the amazing things you guys do for us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Come see me in the back, and I've got T-shirts for y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Here's where we're gonna change the agenda up just a little bit. We have a state representative here tonight who has made time to come and visit us. He has an update for us here in La Jolla, Southeast Colorado. Representative Ty Winter, if you'll come up to the front, state your name and what you do for the cameras for everybody that doesn't know. We're privileged to have you here tonight, sir. And it's directional, so you got this.
You're good to go.
Yeah.
You're good to go. First and foremost, I wanna thank you for the invite. I saw manager and mayor at the hospital tour, and they were like, why don't you come down and speak to the people of La Jolla. And just so you all know, anytime you need me, just give me enough heads up, and I'll be out here. If I'm not out talking to the people, then they don't know what's going on first and foremost. And then how do I know to take your voice back to the state Capitol as we move forward throughout the year?
I wanna start off, thank you, Mr. Velazquez, for bringing up the letter. Myself and Senator
Powtun, we signed onto a letter that was basically drafted by the local hospital here, asking the governor to take a really hard look at where he's gonna spend the money that's gonna come down to save rural hospitals. It has to stay in rural Colorado. That's the gist of the letter. I think everybody in this community knows. I know myself and Senator Powtun really tried hard last year in the long bill to keep more money coming in, to keep the OB ward open. And it just didn't work out. Right now, the state's in financial straits, just like anywhere else. There's no money left in the state. I'm really nervous. We had trouble balancing the budget last May. We literally had to pick through the couch cushions and just find money anywhere we could. And I don't think this is gonna get easier, especially with a lot of the stuff that we're seeing. We've seen a lot of business leave the state. Obviously, with the reduction in oil and gas, that's a reduction in severance tax, which also hits the state's coffers as well. So, just so you all know, Senator Powtun and I were committed to make sure that our hospitals stay open. We have created a few hospitals in rural Colorado. My daughter was in a car accident a couple years ago around Pritchett. And thank God that she was able to get to Springfield, and they were able to get her to Children's in time. You know, anybody that needs a hospital, they don't realize how important it is until they actually need it. So, just know that we're in the fight for that and to be able to keep and sustain good healthcare in rural Colorado. I kinda wanted to go over a little bit of what we've been doing. I wasn't able to come in right after session last year. And next year, I'd like to, you know, right the end of May, beginning of June, to let you guys have the update of what happened during session right off the bat. But I would just like to talk to you about some of the legislation that I worked on. I try to put a little over a thousand miles a month on when I can in the summer. Like I said before, the only way I know what the people of House District 47 want and what they need from the state Capitol is if I talk to the people. So, we're allowed five bill drafts a year. And last year, I tried to be very meticulous about my bill drafts. One thing we see at the state Capitol is a lot of the legislators are one-trick ponies. And I don't mean that in a bad way, that they either go and focus on education or energy. And I have such a massive district with so many different interests, I really try to focus on a little bit of everything. So, last year, myself and Representative Martinez out of the valley, we worked on House Bill 251288. And basically, that's support for federally qualified health centers. What we see is money donated to federally qualified health centers, it goes into the general fund, basically, the healthcare fund. What we wanted is that money to be able to be earmarked. So, if you have a philanthropist that wants to donate money to a federally qualified health center, that that money makes it back into the community that it's in. And it just don't fall in the fund where it gets, you know, disseminated not in the correct way. They've done the work to fundraise. Now, of course, that's a match. It's a 50-50 match. So, whatever we put in or the federally qualified health center gets, the federal government kicks in the other half. Now, there will be some money staying in that fund for the other hospitals. But the majority of that money will stay with the hospital that, that originally was able to get the money put in for it or the federally qualified health center. I think the one that was the most important is I was able to travel down to your pharmacy in Rocky Ford. And after speaking to Mr. Davis, he explained to me what was happening to our rural and independent pharmacies. That's something that, I will not lie to you, I learned a lot. And making this bill and working on this bill was a huge process because there's so many other integral parts to pharmacy law that I didn't understand. And it's obviously a big web to try to, I guess, deconstruct in a way. So, basically, what this did is, this doesn't, the main thing that we wanted to see in this part of the state is, is it didn't allow for couriers. So, when you have prescriptions being delivered by mail, that affected a courier. So, Kai could put together a concoction that had to go, say, to Baca County. And if he didn't deliver it himself, he was outside of the scope of the law. So, what we did is we allowed that for courier. So, now somebody from his staff can actually travel and do that. It mandates the PBM's reimburse rural pharmacies at or above the national average drug acquisition, plus 1% inflation. That's huge, especially when it comes to the fill fee and the rate fee. So, what we were seeing, and Mr. Davis showed, and, and he really deserves a large hand because the amount of money he takes out of his own pocket to make sure people have prescriptions in this area is unbelievable. The man is really a big part of the community. And to see what he, what he does for this community, make sure people are getting their meds, it was pretty awesome. What this does is it makes us competitive. It allows these pharmacies to stay open. Because what would happen was is he would dispense a prescription, and they might give him 10% of what the prescription cost was. How can you keep a business open and serve your community? I think that people that are really pushing to make a lot of money could make it work. But in his case, he really worked hard. Another thing that we did was that this allows for some audiovisual access. So, say he has to be out of town, and he needs scripts to be filled. Somebody can come in via Talimed and basically work with the people, the staff in the pharmacy, and check those prescriptions so there's no time lost. So, say he had, gets sick, or he has to be out a day or two, those prescriptions pile up. So, what this allows is somebody to come in through Tal Health and witness that. That way, there's no stop in processing these. And I don't think people realize, us in small towns do, but it's hard for the city legislators to realize that most of these local pharmacies is the same place you get a birthday card. You might get a box of .22 ammunition to go hunting or a fishing pole. They're not only pharmacies to us, they're actually kind of like country stores. They do flu tests, they do COVID tests, they do vaccinations. So, really important to protect those rural and independent pharmacies. One thing I don't like about legislation at the Capitol is it's very wide scoped. And I really honed in on this. It only affects about 110 pharmacies in the state. And it would be my hopes that my colleagues, I'll explain later, would start running legislation like that. Because one thing I found is, is big city fixes exasperate our rural problems at the state Capitol. For this area, which is ultra important, I did focus on some law enforcement stuff. But I think the biggest for this area that was, we never thought that would happen, is we passed a bill misbranding cultivated meat products as meat. So, what we're seeing is there's going to be lab-grown and cell-grown meat. It's a fact. I really don't like the process. And when you look at the communities that we have, we have high-quality protein sources right here on the range that support all locals and farmers and ranchers. And what you've seen with the big debate about beef is, is for something to be like USA beef, it just has to hit soil and put hooks on soil, and it can be stamped as USA beef. There's a big push for country origin labeling, and we'll probably see that happen. But what this does is, if you're going to produce and sell, sell cultivated meat in Colorado, it has to be labeled as such. It's a choice bill. I think you should know what you're putting in your body. Was that pound of hamburger grown on the range in Otero County? Or was it grown in a test tube in Denver? I think people should know what they wanna eat. And it also protects our farmers and ranchers because we don't wanna ban the sale of lab-grown meat. We just want a fair shock. Farmers and ranchers wanna be able to prove that their product's superior. And we'll let the free market decide on where it goes. And I truly believe it's gonna side with our farmers and ranchers. I did the sunset on the commodity handlers, which just makes sure that we're getting our products out to the rest of the state and the rest of the country. Has a lot to, a Colorado proud. And we market our, I mean, you have Rocky Ford down here, you all understand. But it's ultra important that people know where their vegetables and fruit is coming from, and that we send out a really good product. That way, people keep buying back, because we have that interstate commerce. Another big one was the agricultural worker service, the key provider access. So, one thing we do, Representative Kimmy Lewis, who used to represent this area, she used to do farm and ranch tours. So, when I ran for office, I committed to my constituents, if elected, I would start that back up again. We've had three successful tours. We actually did one two weeks ago on the Unwin Ranch near Kim, Colorado. And what I've found from this is a lot of the legislators out of Denver, they have no idea what our life is like. And they're legislating based off of what they see. And until they come into our communities, I can get up there and speak about it all I want. But it's like anything, until you see it yourself, you really can't realize. It was really neat to have Representative Bacon come down to Kim, Colorado. She is the chair of the Black Caucus. She is, she served on Denver's school board. And for her to walk into Kim, Colorado, who has 20 kids from five years old to 18 years old, I think was like a culture shock. And it's good to see that because they're seeing, they're, they're putting the face with the name, if that makes sense. When we brought it to her through here, we brought them over to NAPS. And we had all of the fruit producers from this area talking. What, one thing we saw is, is they passed the labor bill. You guys all know about that, a labor bill. And what they did was, is first and foremost, they had a private property rights violation. And that's the bill that we changed this year, Hacid Nursery versus California. It was a Supreme Court case that said that people can't just come on your private property for any reason. The second part to this is the, the labor key, the overtime provision. I'm talking to migrant workers down at the farms. They're upset by this law because they come here to make as much money as fast as they can. That way, they can get to another state. That way, they can make more money. We're pushing ourselves out of the market in Colorado with this bill. We're seeing onion farms close down in the northeast part of the state. Farmers and ranchers can't find labor. And the labor that wants to come here and work with visas, they can't make the money they want. So, they're choosing to go to other states. I will say, I think sometimes we all know the road to hell is paved in good intentions. And I think some of the lawmakers that drafted this up had good intentions in their heart. But they didn't realize the application of this law and what it would do to rural Colorado, or be able to produce food. And we all know that food production is national security. We saw that during COVID. And we're blessed and lucky enough that we can get food from our neighbors. But the supply chain was really disrupted. And I think it's important that the people in Denver know that the legislation they pass really hurts us. It really hurts this county overall. I won't go through everything. One of my biggest pushes since I've been elected is I'm a nuclear energy fan. We live in a state where I think that there's a lot of emphasis put on climate. I will tell you this, I think it's unfortunate. And I'll be very honest about this. I think that we've put climate goals in front of people. We are seeing what is happening by changing to green energy so fast. The reason that energy prices are going up is because all of these energy providers have to retool. I mean, you have Comanche shutting down in Pueblo. Not only is that a hit to their community, but how are they gonna replace that energy on the grid? I'm here to tell you, you can do the research. Wind and solar can't do it alone. There's not enough storage, first and foremost, to do it. One thing that's beautiful about technology is it grows. Right now, we have small modular reactors and microreactors. And they can be deployed about anywhere. Farmers and ranchers have changed their opinion on these things because back when you had major nuclear plants, but the towers, number one, you needed a ton of water to cool down the rods. And number two, you needed a large swath of land. That way, you could protect the plant itself. These microreactors can fit on about the size of a Walmart in its parking lot, the footprint of that. They're deploying them underground for protection. And now with technology, they have what's called molten salts. So, they dip the rods in molten salts if they overheat, which actually encapsulates around the rods. And there's a lot of air-cooled technology. Right now in Wyoming, they're deploying a microreactor. And what's neat about the new nuclear technology is they actually spin waste. So, these new thorium reactors actually spin the waste from nuclear energy and turn that into power. What this bill did was change the classification from green energy to clean energy. And the reason we did that was for the tax credits. So, as we see oil and gas and coal being phased out of our state, we have to have the ability to collect severance tax. Now, it may not have hit you all as hard as it did in Los Angeles County, but you all know in Los Angeles County, we have some of the cleanest coal bed methane in the nation. It actually can be pulled out of the ground and run in a furnace without any refining. That's how clean it is. Well, as we move towards the green energy push, it killed jobs in my community. Not only did it kill jobs, it killed the severance tax coming in with those, which hurts roads, schools, hospitals. So, what we did with this is, is in the reclassification, we wanted to make sure that when it was reclassified, that anybody that wanted to deploy, you all have local control still, but say you wanna deploy a small modular reactor in this community, it's gonna bring 200 to 400 good-paying jobs. And it's also gonna allow you to collect severance tax to help with the issues that you, you all face every day if you make decisions in city government. So, I'm really excited about that. That's gonna be my continued push. It was really neat to see who was on the bill. It was myself and Representative Alex Valdez. You have a rural Republican and an intercity Democrat. But we both have the same goal, just different reasons for getting there. And we found a place to come together and pass a really good piece of legislation, which we're gonna continue to work on, actually some citing legislation this year to allow that to happen. The last one is I ran a bill with Representative Martinez. We tried to add members to the PUC. Southeastern Colorado, I think, hasn't had, Pueblo hasn't had a member in 100 years. Southeastern Colorado, I think it's over 50. What was unfortunate about the comments was, we were basically told by people testifying against our bill that there was nobody smart enough in Southeastern Colorado to be on the PUC. I think it's important you know that because I'll always tell you the truth. Whether you like it or not, I was elected to tell the truth. I've been around a few of you, and you know I'm not gonna lie. And the disdain for rural Colorado and our way of life at the state Capitol is pretty hard to see. And the way they look at us at some points. But we're strong, we're resilient, we're salt of the earth. And like I tell them all the time, they can never forget that we clothe them, we feed them, and we heat their homes. And there's some respect value to that. The last bill that I was excited to get on is we're starting to see wolves come over on, from the western slope. They have now tracked in almost into Quirfino County. They're skirting up against Quirfino County. It won't be long until they cross I-25. What we saw happening was, is we have one of the most comprehensive reimbursement programs there is. So, the people of Colorado wanted wolves. Now, the people of Colorado have to pay up to farmers and ranchers and stockgrowers that have their animals eaten by wolves. What we saw was, is the wolf activists were actually finding these people that were reimbursed, and they were harassing them, cutting fences, going and protesting outside of their houses. And we passed along, myself and the Speaker of the House, to make it to where their names were hid from a court request. Not that we're trying to hide anything, but what was happening to these people is wrong. So, that's kind of a rundown of the legislation that I ran last year. I did a couple other bills. But I just want you all to know, please, you can invite me down anytime. I love to, I'd love to give an update whenever you all need, even if it's via Zoom. I try to be as, how do I put it, accessible as possible. You know, I've got nine counties. I have the largest geographic house district in the state. So, there's a whole lot of windshield time. But I try to get into the communities as much as I can. And I wanna thank you all in this area, too, because you're also welcoming to me when I come and do the parades. And you know, thank you for your support at the Capitol. You know, come up and met me, and he's all in. And I appreciate that. And the mayor, I wanna thank you for having me as well. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer any questions, or if there's anything else you'd like to know.
I will pledge that when session ends, if I'm still mayor, you can come back. I have an election tomorrow, so I don't know. You know, when, when we lost the OB, well, when we were told we were gonna lose the OB, when the first call I made was to Ty. And Ty worked hard to try and save that OB for, for us here in the valley. And even though we were unsuccessful in doing it, you, you worked relentlessly for us. And I appreciate that. We had a lot of conversations, and we just couldn't get it done. But to see you at the hospital tour that we had the other day, I mean, you're, you're still in it. You're still in the fight with us. And there's a lot of things that Ty does every day for rural Colorado. And you need to be appreciated for it. So, thank you for that, Ty.
And thank you. And, you know, I didn't come from politics or money. I'm somebody that wanted to get involved and make a difference. And I wanna help people. And the only way I can help people is by showing up and being at those events. And my commitment to you is I will keep helping. The last I ask, I have with you all is, is after COVID hit, in my opinion, the only good thing that happened at the Capitol during COVID was is they allowed for remote testimony. Please, please, I ask you, testify remote on bills that are gonna hurt your city, hurt your schools, and hurt your community. This isn't about partisan politics anymore. I tell people all the time, and I'm gonna say it, this isn't about Republican or Democrat. It's about rural versus urban. There is a rural-urban divide. And if we don't scrap and fight for our areas, we all live here for a reason. If we wanted to live in Denver, we would be there. We all live here for a certain way of life. So, please, testify, get involved. It would be so important. Come up, bring the council. We'll do a tour. We'll get you down, sitting on the floor. But this is, I look at this as like a 50-50 deal. I don't ever wanna thank you for a pat on the back. I don't mind leaving my wife and my kids and my business to go and fight for my district. Because I say, I love the people of this district. They remind me of my mom, my grandma, my kids. But the other 50% is you being the cavalry and coming in. Because one thing that was disheartening during the ranch tour is that we had an intercity legislator literally say, there's a lot of times we don't listen to the rural legislators, and we tune them out. The only way they can, they can hear it other than from us is from you. And we all need you to come in with a backup and be, yes, these are issues in our communities. You wanna host an economic tour down here in the next year, let me know. We'll try to bring legislators down here. Because the goal is to get them to see how what they do endeavor, how it affects your life. Once again, big city fixes exasperate rural problems. So, the more that you can get involved and help friends, family, neighbors, your school boards, whoever you can get involved, our voices need to be loud and unified. And, you know, I know that the mayor, they do a good job of this. But we really need to bring the southeast corner together and have a bigger unified... to bring the southeast corner together and have a bigger unified voice. Because, you know, our way of life's important out here, and our people are important. And just because we don't have the population and the money, that doesn't mean the people of House District 47 are any less important than anybody in the state. And I will continue to advocate for you all.
Thank you, Ty.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me.
And Ty, you worked with Action Colorado too, right? So Michael just graduated from that. And they let us know of any problem bills they see coming up. And if we do need to testify, Michael can now give us that rundown and, you know, get with you and see if there's something you need from us.
Well, if any of you wanted to be added, so shoot my email. I didn't bring cards with me, but you can hop on the internet and find it. Shoot me your email and ask to be, what's right on there? Ask to be added to my update list. So during session, I'll give you the good, the bad, and the ugly every week, and what we're seeing, and calls to action and to testify. So please have yourself added to the list, and I'll make sure you get the information.
Thank you, Ty. Have a safe trip.
Thank you all. Have a great evening. Appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Now we'll go citizens' participation. Mr. Goodwin, please state your name for those that don't remember when you sat up here.
My name's Jim Goodwin. I live at 1317 Braddy Sheriff LaHana. I have two things I'd like to argue about, fuss about.
No, no.
Okay. Number one is the new park. It's looking great. Always having stuff going on over there. One thing that bothers me is kids have to go to the bathroom. But the money that we spent, doors are locked. They have the outside toilets. I've been over there a couple of times myself, and there's not even any toilet paper in there on the outside. So if we're not going to use that building, how about flushing the lines out and putting signs up on the door saying "closed," so the public will know what's going on? One thought. Number two, I've been out at Walmart a lot lately, and especially on the weekends. And what do I see out there? Four and five city vehicles. On a weekend, why are these people out in basically company vehicles and out there getting their groceries? I've even seen several of them where they had their spouse with them at the same time. I don't think that's right. I used to sit on this council, like we said here a few seconds ago, and the budget was tight. And you can't tell me that our budget has freely given in a little bit. We need to get this kind of stuff stopped and show to the public that you're the ones on council, you're defending this, not passing this up. So that's my two thoughts for the evening, is the bathrooms need something, and all of the guys that are out there with their vehicles. Now, granted, Paul, the guy that's on call, he needs a vehicle. City, the water, needs something. But why does everybody else have to have a vehicle? So that's my two, my thought for the night. Thank you for your time. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Take care, Jim. Anyone else for citizen participation? You have to say your name all over again, too, sir.
I will. David Pauli is my name, 622 Colorado Avenue, the top of that little house that got burned. And I wanted to thank Paul. He called me out there the other day at the council meeting about not being accurate and asked me to meet with him outside. And I did, and there were several of us. And he didn't have anything meaningful at all to dissuade anything that I had stated. And Paul, that's disappointing. And me, and you, when we're up here in front of people, and this is recorded, and people are hearing your voice, and you're making me look like I'm not telling the truth, you know, that's not very nice. But I have a little bit more disturbing news there. I talked to the district attorney's office today, and the police finally did get their report in. But they need to have the final totals from all of us that were victimized by that fire and in order to determine whether this young man's going to have a felony or misdemeanor. And I was really shocked to find out that the $890,000 devastating loss that the city had on the abandoned property that got burned was not reported to raise that to a felony with the DA. It's almost like you guys are trying to protect that kid so he doesn't have even anything, like he needs a lawyer or anything like that, because we have plenty of stuff that would help that lawyer really sort things out. But he's not even going to get charged. And I thank you for being up there too, sir. You just said some interesting things. You said that you don't run, and I can appreciate that. Military standing, you know, I get it. And I have, that's noble, and I hold honor for that. But I want you guys to know, nobody can run. It's going to come out, and it's going to be known. And just like our last time that I asked for the police, for the FBI's tip number, you didn't even have that in the minutes to report anything like that. It's almost like the city really wants to hide something. The FBI tip line, 303-629-7171. The trip prompt is "Fire at 618 Colorado Avenue, LaHana, Colorado." And also, guys, the statute of limitations when that fire crossed property lines, that's attempted second-degree murder. There's no statute of limitations on that. And there's no statute of limitations on first-degree arson. And I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a fireman anymore, I'm an old guy. But when you guys and the city didn't respond to the tree fire, that was your fire from then on. And everything you did, dropping the hose, not going to the line that, the hydrant that was right across the street, all these things to allow the fire to burn into the back of the building and get established, and only fight it from one side of the road, it's just unbelievable to me. But I'm not the only one, and it's going to come out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Anybody have a question? Paul, no?
The purpose of meeting with you wasn't to dissuade you or change your mind. I wanted to hear what you had to say. What I took issue with was not whether or not you were telling the truth, because the truth will be determined by other people's investigators. What I took issue with was the accusatory turn that you used towards the fire department and the city, pretty much just insinuating that the city would intentionally cause a fire that may, that may cause harm or property damage. That's what I took issue with.
I can appreciate that, and I.
So that wasn't a question of you, that was a statement.
But I can appreciate that, and I did my best to get. I did my best to get the truth out, and I talked to Mitch Grzanski, Grzotski, Grzinski. Anyway, you know Mitch. I talked to him, and he refused to investigate anything on the fire chief, no matter what my proof was, no matter. And the sheriff, you know, he has no jurisdiction. And so we're really here without a voice, Paul. You're our city council. And if we can't even get a willing ear from our elected representatives, what really good are you?
I offered to meet with you, we met.
Thanks for asking how I was feeling. That was really moving for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for citizen participation? Gone once, gone twice. All right. Mrs., now, who is this? Michael? Or just this? Oh, consent agenda, I understand. It's been a long meeting, all right. Consent agenda, we have a motion on consent agenda.
A motion to approve.
So a motion to a second?
Second.
A motion in a second for the consent agenda, which is just the meeting minutes for October 20th, 2025. Any other discussion? If not, a last for your vote. That passes unanimously. Now unfinished business, I don't see, I'm going to go with Mrs. Harris on this.
This is the second reading of an ordinance fixing the mill levy for assessment evaluations for the year ending on December 31st, 2025, as for the fiscal year 2026.
I entertain a motion. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? I have none, a last for your vote? That passes unanimously. Mrs. Harris?
Next is the second reading of the annual appropriation ordinance appropriating sums of monies to defray expenses and liabilities of the city of LaHana, Colorado, for the city's fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2026, and ending on December 31st, 2026.
I entertain a motion. Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I just wanted to follow up. I had asked about some of the items in the general expense. I am concerned about a sixfold increase in what's budgeted under miscellaneous. And I do, yeah, I'm concerned. It's a 15% increase in the general expense, expenses overall. And I think that is what, it's the platform we all ran on, is being fiscally responsible. And I, it just does concern me. And I'm also concerned that we are planning on leasing vehicles. Last year in the budget, we had $78,000. In the coming budget, we have $192,800 for leasing vehicles. I don't see where that's coming out. It's not clearing me where it's coming out in the budget. I understand that it's a shift in how we're doing things. I just, I appreciated our previous citizen speaker. I think we have a responsibility to be aware of how we present ourselves publicly. And I'm not sure that spending nearly $200,000 a year in leases that we did not spend two years ago is the best use of our tax dollars. And I'm concerned about an increase in the general, the general fund under miscellaneous. It feels unaccounted for. And I previously asked that we have the budget, other boards and commissions have a portion of the agenda that's always dedicated to financial statements on the agendas. And I have asked that we include that on ours as well. And I just think that it would help us be more transparent communicating these items as we meet. This is, this is the only place that we should be meeting and talking about these things. So I would just like to urge that maybe somebody else join me in wanting to put that on the agenda as a regular item.
Any other discussion? If not, a last for your vote? That passes 5 to 1. Now, this one I know is Michael.
All right, new business. First reading, an ordinance making supplemental appropriations to the Internal Services Water and Wastewater Funds for the calendar year of 2025. This would be, normally be the finance director, but she is out sick tonight. This is, this is the money she spoke to previously from the PFOS funding that we received this year rather than the anticipated next year. That's all this is. It's just those, those monies being placed into this year's budget, the current year's budget, rather than the next year's budget.
So it's not being held over, it's being put in effective now, so.
Correct.
Because we got the money now, so it's fine.
Correct, yes, sir.
I entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? If not, a last for your vote? And that passes unanimously. Committee and board reports, any committee and board reports?
The next senior senator meeting won't be till Thursday, this coming Thursday. So not waiting till the next city council meeting. I'll just share with you, the LaHana gem for this month is Mrs. Pat Valdez. Been a member since 2005. And her message is to offer others the same understanding and grace that you'd want for yourself. So that's just it from the senior senator.
What do they get for being the gem of the month?
They get to be the gem of the month.
And it's drawn randomly. I love that. But it's drawn randomly from the people who are members of the senior center, so it's kind of fun, get to meet everybody.
If I may continue with the hospital, not necessarily a board report from the hospital, but on November 13th, from 4:00 to 7:00, they're going to be hosting a wellness and women's health event where they're going to be doing the ribbon cutting for the new 3D mammography machine. It'll be a wellness expo and tours. So please either get on the hospital Facebook page and click on there, invite friends, or please show up. That's important. Early detection is important.
Anything else for committee and board reports? Mr. City Manager, your time.
All right, thanks, sir. So going back to 618 Colorado, across the street here, EPA has concluded their cleanup work. What's left over there to do is removal of the concrete and all the backfill, which will be done by our city crew. That work is anticipated to be completed by the end, no later than the end of the month. A little bit about the cleanup across the street, there were 31 loads, 31 20 cubic yard loads, for a total of 620 cubic yards of debris that were removed. The cost of that, the cost of that was $20.30 per cubic yard, totaling $12,586 in tipping fees, which again, was part of the emergency funding that we received from the EPA. We do want to give a special shout-out to the city of Los Angeles and Ambien County for giving us a lower, lower than normal rate. Their normal rate is about $30.60 per cubic ton. Something that, whenever I first got on board here, and I started asking around about different things, different stuff going on, the Ark Valley conduit was kind of dumped in my lap. And I got to do the research, they came here, they gave a presentation. It still wasn't real clear as to what they were actually going to be doing for us here in LaHana. So I did a little bit of digging, and we pay in quarterly to this, every quarter. And so far, from 2011 to today, which, look, I have a POM in my inbox right now for about $25,000 to be paid to the Ark Valley conduit. So far to, from 2011 to now, it goes back to 2004. However, for whatever reason, the records from '04 to '11 are gone due to being destroyed. I guess it's a thing that happens, is what I'm told. So just the numbers that we were able to compile from 2011 to today is to the tune of almost $1.5 million. If you break that out over the year, over the past 11 years, or excuse me, 14 years, it's about $105,000 a year that the city's been paying into this. And from what I've been able to see, has received absolutely nothing. Now, the update they gave us the day they came is that, you know, they're continuing to work on the process, or continuing to work on the conduit to get it out this way, but it's just, it's a slow-moving thing. When we asked, we said, hey, how far have you come? They've been about 20 miles, is what I understand, out to Boone, I believe is what they said. So I would like to have a discussion perhaps on the next council, city council meeting, for you all to discuss our continued efforts, so to speak, into this. Because again, I'm not really seeing anything that the city is getting out of it, nor do I see it getting to us anytime soon.
That's for our project waters to the conservancy district, isn't it?
I believe so. It's not specified in the budget, but I believe that's what I've heard that that was for our project water that goes to the southeast water conservancy.
Just, just. And again, I'll go back and talk to Russell again about it, but that's, you know, when I asked, because again, it came through, and I said, what is this? And so that's what we paid for the conduit stuff. And I said, what are we paying for?
To my knowledge, it's, it's our project water that we're-
Okay, if I'm mistaken, again, I'll come back and say that I'm mistaken, but-
I'm all for having a conversation on the conduit, I'm just saying that money is going to-
Mike, like, but it's not about whether you're mistaken or not. It should probably be specified.
Okay. Well, good, I'll, I'll jump back into that with Russell and, and come back with, with an update. So a little bit about the police department. So it was a little too last month at the meeting about the loss of police officers. So I had Chief Quick give me a rundown of, of the officers. So of, of the six that we've lost this year, one has moved out of town. Another one has left law enforcement altogether and moved to, out of town, I won't say where, but out of town to be with, with a fiance. Another one has left with law enforcement altogether, went to Texas to pursue entrepreneurship. Another one moved back to a position with Crowley County. And two other ones that have left for, to different agencies for various reasons. So since then, they have, they have one cadet that will be starting, or excuse me, one cadet who will be graduating in December and will be starting the FTO in, in December. We have two others that are in the middle of, in the background check process. It should be starting with the, with the department within the next month or so. Currently, we have seven applicants for the upcoming law academy. And so that's been narrowed down to three, which will get them back to full staff here within the next couple of months. And to put it into perspective, as far as losing officers, one statistic that was brought up was Pablo Police Department is down 70 officers. And their wages are much, much higher than ours here. So I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a policing problem here locally. I think it's just one of those things that we're all, we're always focused right here, right now. And not really seeing the bigger picture of that policing everywhere is, is a little tight right now. On the electric side, we've, we've lost three employees. They've all went to larger utilities. So far, we've had two, we had two hour back, but they're brand new. So it's going to take a little bit of training. But again, that's something that Chris and the guys aren't, aren't used to doing. And then they are, out of their three, they have three certified journeyman, journey linemen, and three apprentices too, which will be certified here in January. During the month of October, the fire department did their month, their fire prevention month. They taught about 700 different kids in schools here, La Jolla Primary, Manza Elementary, Sharaw, La Jolla CDS, Hasty and McClave Elementary, and a few of the other smaller daycare programs here in the area. Parkside, the tennis court should be started this week. They had to zoom the day because there was discrepancies on some poles that were there, that are located right there right now. We're going to end up removing those poles, which is going to help sustain the, the court for much longer than anticipated. Then we also submitted the final documentation for the planning on the runway replacement that's going to be happening next year. Again, that's another big grant that was, was done prior to beginning here, but it will be going on next year. Over first thing, Jen and the gang are doing a self audit and they continue with yard cleanups as well as some lighting upgrades in the warehouse to some LEDs. Last month for sanitation department, they did a cleanup. They had 1,126 tires that were recycled. In the, in the compactor, they took on a total of a little over 77 tons. Recycled e-waste, which is your TV monitors, stuff like that. They filled up two and a half 20 yard roll offs. Paint waste of two tons, antifreeze 30 gallons, used oil 140 gallons. And metal, almost 30, 30 tons of metal. And? Let me think here. And I'm missing the library's reports. I don't remember it right off the top of my head, but if I'm remembering correctly, I want to say Heather said they gave out like 800 pieces of candy the other night and like 400 books or something, something crazy like that. But again, as always, the library is doing, doing wonderful things. They have that monthly calendar that goes out that's just full of goodies. One thing she did note is the participation in the free movie that happens every month is down. And so they are looking to potentially discontinue that, discontinue that service in the coming year. So if that's something we want to keep on doing, we do need to get out and watch those free movies. Then we had breakfast burritos on Friday, or excuse me, covered breakfast burritos Friday at the senior center. And unless anybody had any questions, that's all I have.
I do have a question, Michael. You sent an email out about the food drive and stuff like that. Do you want to touch on that?
Not really. Because I gave my email and I also said that we're still working on some logistics and trying to get it figured out to, to be able to put it all together, so, but-
I just want people to know that you're, you're looking into-
Yes, no, so with, with the SNAP benefits and the government shutdown that we have going on right now, myself along with a couple of the supervisors, we're getting together to try to figure out how to make sure our people here in La Jolla and Otero County are still being fed. So essentially, we're going to be putting together food drives in different places throughout the city. Again, there's still some logistics that we're working out. I'm hoping to have more answers for by the morning. But essentially, we're going to have different food drop off points here in the city to, to be able to take, take those items to. We're going to end up following all those items to one central location. That way they can be distributed in the best possible way. Plus, those folks already have their, their ways of doing things and the system's set in place to get those food items out to folks.
So I did reach out to associated charities as well. And they said, since just the news has broken about potentially the SNAP benefits being cut off, they, they are averaging five new people per day that are going in there. They are not able to sustain that, especially at this time. There's never a good time for this, but right at holiday time is when they are the busiest and they're, they're going to have a hard time with that. Not to mention with the closing of Safeway, Safeway was also a big donator to, to them. So we're working with them to, to try and help them get other resources in. What they said, I said, can you give me a top three of what you need? So until Michael can get his, if you're just watching at home and you want to donate to associated charities, the top three items are cereal, dry milk or shelf stable milk, and the third one is mac and cheese. Those are their top three items. And the reason I ask that is because we want to give what people are actually going to use. So, you know, anything you can give is going to be much appreciated. But if you can try to do more on those, those three items, that would be greatly helpful to everyone that is suffering during this time right now. So I thank Michael for being, you know, for thinking there and doing that for, for us at the city.
I'm sorry, I got cereal and milk, but I didn't get the other one.
Macaroni and cheese.
Macaroni and cheese.
There wasn't four?
No, so they said dry milk or shelf stable milk. All right. Community events council report.
Well, on November 10th will be the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. So to all the jarheads, leathernecks, happy birthday, you're in. Especially to those that are forward deployed in harm's way, happy birthday. And on the 11th will be Veterans Day. So thank you to all the veterans. And I thought it would be interesting to talk about Staff Sergeant Ambrosio Guleen, who died during the Korean War. He was posthumously awarded Medal of Honor for his actions there. He turned an enemy attack of overwhelming forces into a defeat in a disorderly retreat. The thing about Mr. Guleen or the Marine Staff Sergeant Ambrosio, he was born in La Jolla. So we do have a Medal of Honor winner that was born here in La Jolla. And he, he actually grew up in Texas. And if you haven't heard his name before, you're going to hear it quite often because I'm going to take this as a personal undertaking to make sure that there's at least a recognition that he was born here. And I've heard people say that he moved and never came back. He was a child taken by his parents who were migrant seasonal farm workers. And even that was brought up that while he was a migrant worker. And I just have to say, that is probably the most ignorant thing I have ever said. This, this gentleman grew up, joined the Marine Corps, went and fought, died for his country, for the very freedoms that are exercised in places like here, at our city park and around the nation. So next week during everybody's day off, take a second to remember those veterans that are serving, have served, or gave the fullest measure of service for their country. Thank you.
Is it Gien?
Did, Gien, Gien.
We've heard about him a couple of times. There was a guy that was pushing to have a Veterans Field name for him at one time, too.
Yeah, and then, in all honesty, I didn't know about him until, and it was Jerry Gonzalez from Jerry's Painting and a group of veterans that came to city council. And I don't think they were given the appropriate amount of time by that council at that time. I was on that council. I believe anybody else was on here, maybe a council person or show up, but that was it. Hopefully, we get this going again and give this Marine the honor that he deserves. I think it's something to have a Medal of Honor winner from your community.
Absolutely. Thank you, Paul.
I'm Gus, and Joe.
Go ahead.
Okay. On, it would have been Wednesday, October 22nd. I attended a luncheon in Rocky Ford hosted by the Lower Arkansas Valley Water Conservation District. And it was a lesson from the San Luis Valley utilizing 1041 powers to protect local water rights. Very informational. In a municipality like this, there's, there's some effect, not as much as in rural county. But basically what happened in the San Luis Valley is, what's happened recently here is people are looking to transfer water and water rights out of our area. It's been an ongoing thing for, for 30 plus years there. And, and it's affected the rural community, ranchers and farmers. So what happened in the San Luis Valley, they were able to form a, a, a larger workforce of six counties and utilizing 1041 regulations, putting stipulations into what would be required to transfer water rights out. Very strict regulations. And within the six counties, each county had a board member. And if you did not meet these regulations and you would pass on, say something was happening in, in Otero County, these six counties come together, these, these leaders, they look at everything. And if, if they, if one of the criteria is not met to the county, they would forward a, no, you can't go forward with this project. And, and that kind of sets the rules as far as if you get a no, then that water transfer cannot occur. So it's a pretty important thing and it works very well for the San Luis Valley. So it's something that we're looking to in this area. It's a lot of information, we're moving forward with more discussions in the future. But it was a, was an interesting luncheon and information. And just, I think something that's, that would work well in this area. Even if it doesn't affect our municipality as much, we, we, we're all together in it, you know? And southeastern Colorado, kind of like Ty said, you know, we, we got to fight as a group to, to get things done. So it was a good deal, so.
Thank you, Jen. Any other, if we went on to governing body reports?
I just wanted to say that the La Jolla Chamber of Commerce is having their Veterans Day celebration on November 11th from 1:00 to 2:00 PM at the La Jolla Primary School. That's it.
Any governing body reports?
Say, way to go, La Jolla, for Halloween, man. I don't know where all these kids are going to get all that candy. I'm surprised they're not going to show up to the youth activities at the library all wired up on candy, so thank you.
Would we, do we have something set up with Yee Haw for now that it's cold? Can you give us direction or to direct people?
Ah, good question. I, I would say make sure that you are following Yee on Facebook. I think that's how most of their information is getting out. Definitely looking for volunteers who are willing to be trained and ready when we start having warming shelters. So thanks for the reminder. I'll make sure we have a, an update for the next meeting.
Okay. Is there anything right now? Or anyone?
Tonight? No. I'm sorry?
Yeah, if there's somebody out in the cold right now, is there anywhere they could go?
We do not have a, we do not, warming shelters happen when there's extreme colds and not really-
Oops, sorry.
I think when we see that coming in the forecast, that's when it's decided to open a warming shelter. But there's not any, there's not an ongoing permanent shelter that has opened in La Jolla, if that was the question, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I have some on now, so I'll just, I'll meet with Michael later.
I just want to say for council, if you guys noticed, we have an officer at the back. Something at the last meeting, he has now noticed, we have this switch here if, you know, we ever feel we're in danger up here. But with the PD moving to the armory, it wouldn't have mattered if we hit the switch or not. So we will have an officer at our council meetings now and our court nights just to make sure that everyone is safe and able to do that. So we thank you for being here with us tonight. There were multiple officers from LJPD, Bend County, and Otero County at Walmart this morning. We received an email, was it middle of the week, Michael? That, you know, there was, it wasn't just a La Jolla thing either. This was supposed to be nationwide with the SNAP benefits being reduced. People may try to get unruly. So Chief Quick was able to act proactively instead of reactively and able to make sure that, you know, we had a presence out there. So I thank them for that. I don't believe that that was ever going to be something in, in our area, but it's nice to have that police presence out there just to make sure that everyone acts accordingly. We're, we're going to do everything we can, Michael, put that plan together to, to help in any way we can. But you know, there's only so much we're, we're in control of. Sometimes when we have conversations from the audience, you know, there's, there's frustration, but there's a lot that we're not in control of. So just, just remember that as well, too. And let's keep moving forward and let's keep working together. Thank you all for coming out tonight and I will adjourn this meeting.